Okay, this is the Thursday, May 2nd, 2024 Wasika School Board Work Session. And it's 5:30 PM. And we are in the central building, second floor conference room. And we have three items tonight. We'll turn it over to Dr. Hartspud.
Thank you. Well, the first thing we'll start with tonight is our staff spotlight. And Jenny Sandbuck, our school social worker, is here with us this evening to share some of the work that she's doing for us. And, you know, we often talk about our school, our student support team, and social workers, counselors, nurses, you know, psychologists, deans, all the folks that support. The list goes on for our students. We tend to talk about them holistically a lot. But not only do they work as a comprehensive team to wrap around and support all students, but they all have specific roles and specialties and expertise. And particularly right now, when the legislature is so sensitive to providing additional support, but they tend to blanket that, and counselor is the word they throw around a lot without really recognizing what everyone's role is in a school a lot. And so we're lucky to have Jenny here with us tonight to share a little about the school social worker role as we build a layered, comprehensive support system for students. And just, I think it's great to spotlight some of the work she does.
Thank you. I appreciate being asked to be here today. To start, I'd like to share a little bit about myself and my background with the Wasika Public School District, as well as my role as the school social worker at the junior senior high school. So as, as I said, I'm the school social worker at the junior senior high school. And included in my job, I also am the McKenna Vento District Liaison, 504 Building Coordinator, and Program Coordinator for the Wasika Area Schools Therapy Program. I began my career in the district at Hartley Elementary as the Family Service Coordinator in 2001 through 2014. And then I transitioned to the junior senior high in 2015. As a school social worker, I assist students in strengthening social emotional skills. I'm the liaison between school, home, and community resources. I support students in addressing issues that may get in the way of learning, which would reflect back on some of the other roles that I have as McKenna Vento District Liaison and 504 Building Coordinator. I work to remove barriers, whether those barriers are academic, financial, or social emotional barriers. I thoroughly enjoy working with students on setting goals to success and becoming advocates for themselves. Connecting with community resources is an important part of my role as the school social worker. Resources play a significant role in removing barriers to success for students and families. I work closely with our school counselors, Bree Lawrence and Paul Marlin. As school counselors, they also wear many different hats, but unlike me, are more focused on career, personal development, and future planning. I consider myself to be so fortunate to work in the school district. The students are amazing, and I love being able to interact with them every day. One of my favorite things to do in the morning is to stand outside my door and greet students as they come in, to let them know that we're happy they're there and that I'm glad to see them. I consider it a privilege, as I said, to work with the students and families. Another big part of the role of my job as school social worker is working closely with teachers and staff within the, within my school and the district too, but mainly in my school. And I couldn't ask for a better team. We have a great group of teachers and staff, and I know that, I hope they know they can count on me, and I know that I can count on them as well. Some exciting things to share from this school year is I was able to collaborate with the Neighborhood Service Center, and we have brought in a food program for students and families. And tomorrow, I'm actually scheduled to meet with Cindy Colander, the director at the Neighborhood Service Center, to talk about what kind of food program may be, you know, similar to what I've been running this school year, can happen this summer at the junior senior high school as well. This year as well, Bree Lawrence, one of our counselors, and I became co-coordinators of our after-school program called WING, which stands for Wasika Intervention Group. It runs Monday through Thursday of each week, as long as they're school, and from 3:00 until 4:45. It, in my opinion, has been a great addition to the services that we're able to offer to students and support that we're able to offer them as well. Some of the things that we do at WING include, we have tutoring. We've had ACT prep, teacher support, organizational skills, and reteaching of academic skills. Like I said, it's been so exciting to have it in place and be able to offer it to our students. As you know, prom was last weekend, or I should say, many of you probably know, prom was last weekend. And thanks to generous donations that we had from community members and staff members too, I was able to offer to students if they needed prom dresses, suits, ties, accessories, so that, you know, they could enjoy their, their prom. And then I also volunteered for the first year as a prom chaperone. That was a lot of fun to be there, and I will definitely do that again. I know that there's a lot of pieces to my role, you know, as I wrote this down, that there's a lot of things that I'm just not thinking about that, that occur on a daily basis. But I would say, as I said, most of it is, is kind of encompassed, of course, around working with students and families and community resources and teachers and administration. I have, in the past, I have been available for education on our professional development days. As we have a day coming up tomorrow, and in the past assisted, or I should say coran, something called, excuse me, Fidget Mindfully. And so providing more education as well to teachers. I have actually made it through my notes of what I wanted to go over. I thought it would last a little bit longer, but is, are there any questions about anything that I've mentioned or that I haven't mentioned?
Can you talk a little about McKenna Vento, what that means, that serves homeless students? There's some laws in place for that?
Yeah, absolutely. So McKenna Vento is a federal program that it protects students and families who may be experiencing, they might be in transition. Homelessness is, you know, describes what it is when someone's dealing with homelessness. Now, traditionally, we might think of that as someone doesn't have a roof over their head. But McKenna Vento encompasses a lot of different areas. It might be that maybe someone has lost their housing, and so they're doubling up or living with a friend, another family member. The loss can be to economic hardship. It can be due to, how do I say it? Maybe at home conflict at home, things of that nature. So what I, what I work closely with, we call them point people at different buildings. At WIS, it's Jim Packard, and we have Chris Lepidus at Hartley, and Natalia Pitts here at the ALC, in the building, I should say, at the ALC. And, you know, we work hard to identify families that maybe are experiencing homelessness so that we can, again, remove those barriers. That might include, maybe there's some financial pieces that I can, we can connect them with. Transportation, because sometimes when a student maybe becomes homeless, they might end up in a neighboring community. And so one of the biggest pieces that I feel like I assist with is getting transportation set up so that the student doesn't have to change districts, right? We want to keep the continuity of education going. It's been a while, and I don't remember my source on this, but one of the resources that I'd been taught about was that with every, every like district change, there can be up to a 30% loss in academic progress. So we're trying to avoid things like that for students and families. I work, just today, was on the phone with our MDE representative, Roberto Riaz. He's a great support when it comes to McKenna Vento, because there's a lot of facets to it that even though I'd like to think I'm well-versed at it, I don't know all of it. And he has been a great support with that as well. Did you say 504 as well?
Yeah, right ahead.
All right. Another role that I have, that I also would consider to remove barriers for students is I'm the 504 Building Coordinator at the junior senior high school. So again, we look at, you know, this is a piece that, that is something that is federally mandated a lot that we need to follow for students who may have a disability or a perceived disability. This is not special education, although I am able to access 504 plans and creating them through special education forms and online. It's, like I said, it's geared to ensure that a student has an equitable access to the learning environment and is different than an IEP. So that's another piece of role that I do. I work closely with Justin Johnston, our Assistant Principal, on attendance. That has been an area that I would say I've been pretty passionate about for several years. I feel that it's very reflective on how a student may, you know, of course, academically, but it also might be a way to kind of see, like, is there, is there more support needed in different areas? And maybe attendance is reflecting some things that might be going on, you know, with a student, and they might need that support.
Questions?
Any questions for Jenny?
Yeah. What kind of hurdles are out there that makes it more difficult for you or your staff for getting help where it's needed?
Just to speak for myself, I thought a little bit about, you know, that before coming here. And I feel like sometimes it's the financial, right? Getting the things that maybe would be needed for a student, right? But I would say, pretty exciting that in the last couple of years, we had some funding that came through, like, just for McKenna Vento. Thousands of dollars that we've been able to use, like, if I know a family needs groceries, I can go out. And they, in the past, we made it work too, but it's been so much easier these last few years to be able to access the funding that, that's been supplied to the district specifically for McKenna Vento. I think sometimes too, I don't know if I'm accurate in how I think about this, but sometimes being a smaller district or rural district, the role that maybe, like, let's say someone might have to play with, like McKenna Vento, being a coordinator of different things, whereas a bigger district might have funding that supports an actual role, even though I understand their population is bigger and everything too. So, you know, they might have different coordinators for different pieces that have to do with things like McKenna Vento. So that's, I'm just speaking to my role. Is there a lot of paperwork or auditing in those programs for you? So last summer, and Eric is probably aware of this as well, we were audited for what would be like our grievance procedure for McKenna Vento. So I, and I put together a procedure in place so that when I'm doing, or any of the point people at the, in the buildings are doing interviews and paperwork for McKenna Vento, we also go through, like, the grievance procedure with families to talk about. If you aren't satisfied with some of the things that we might be putting into place, here's the steps that you can take and how, you know, how we can try to follow through on that. It was, I would say, quite a bit to put that into place, but it was a great learning experience, and I think we're better to have it in place as well.
Sure.
But otherwise, I try to track other things too, just so I have a paper trail, because sometimes, you know, we do a lot during the day, right?
How do the kids know that they can come to see you? Or how does it work? Do you need to find them first? Or can they come because they think they have issues and they can come to you?
I think that it's a little bit of everything, right? Sometimes I might seek out a student myself, based on maybe, like I said, work with that excellent team of teachers who they might come to me and just be like, hey, would you check in with someone? Just see how they're doing. Or I'm concerned about their attendance. Will you check in, just, you know, see what might be happening? So that might be one way, whether it's a staff or a teacher referral of sorts. Other ways that they might be aware is that we do try to get ourselves out and about with the students so that they know that we're available, we're, you know, just kind of reaching out to them. I would say through, you know, at the junior senior high school, we have screens. We, you know, where things are, you know, advertised to students. So that may be on there about connecting with me, about the food program, about connecting with me, about the prom resources. Trying to think of some other ways that, that we kind of get that information out there, but a variety of ways that we do. And I try to get out and even lunch duty, you know, and meet and talk with students too.
I saw in the Mankato Free Press today that the Mankato Public Schools, May is Mental Health Month. And there's been, I think, ever-increasing discussions about mental health in our whole, in our world. What could you comment on that as far as the students at the high school, or maybe even the staff too?
So how about I start out a little bit about, thank you for acknowledging that May is, you know, Mental Health Awareness Month. And I am a member of the Wasika County Suicide Prevention Cohort. And so one of the things that we focused on, of course, recently is May, right? And, and how it's Mental Health Awareness Month. So working closely with, like, just today, Bree Lawrence and I met and kind of tried to solidify our plans for how we're going to get the information out, right? So next week, we have students, that student council members, that will be making daily announcements during Blue Jay Connect over the intercom about, first, the awareness of the month, and then other, like, tips and ideas about mental health, where you plan to bring in with the coordinating with Pastor Jolene at Grace Lutheran. We're bringing in some emotional support dogs at one point. And then we're going to have our Green Out Day, which is, which was named as our Wasika County Green Out Day officially. So we're going to do some things and have a wellness challenge as well. But as far as commenting about mental health amongst students and staff, you know, I think that is another big part of the role that I have, right? Is working with students. And, and we are fortunate to have services here in town and in our region, whether it's the Mental Health Navigator, whether it's Children's Mental Health Case Management, connecting students and families to those resources if they need them. But definitely, you know, trying to identify and get those resources out to students so that they can come to us, or we can come to them, and just, you know, try to support them. As far as percentages, you know, things like that, you know, numbers, that's really hard for me to kind of put, you know, a number on that. But I think we all, right, we all have our moments where we need to look at and think about where we at with our mental health, and trying to make sure that, take away that stigma, right?
Also, in this article, they were talking about, is it Project Hope in Mankato?
Hope Squad. The Hope Squad.
Okay. And am I correct in that it's where other students are trained to help their fellow students? If they have, maybe you can explain it better than?
I actually think you might be able to.
I do, yeah, yeah. So it is, it's, it's a program where high school students are nominated by their peers. They feel that they're good listeners. They're, they're trained in what to do when a, when a peer is talking about some self-harm or some suicidal ideation. They're not expected to know, be the support for another, another child, but they know who to go to, and they know what to do in those instances. So you don't have a 16 or 17-year-old young person, my friend just told me this, what do I do? So we train those folks in what to do that. So actually, that's coming to Wasika. The words, Dr. Miller and I meet with the Hope Squad individual here next week. We got, we got funded by Greater Mankato United Way for that position for next, next fall. Hasn't been something we're ready to announce to the world just yet, what that's going to look like, but it's coming, it's coming down the pike for us as well, for that option too. And it's just a support network so kids know how to talk to each other. And, you know, sometimes it's a lot of stress when a friend tells you something like that, and, and what do I do? And we don't want any child to feel like I knew something, and then something happened, and I didn't know what to do. And so we're going to try to put that in place for kids. And it's not a, not an expensive program, got it going, but Barb Couse was in town today at Rotary talking about it with us. And Mankato United Way has supported us, Greater Mankato United Way, through the four counties, supported us through our Mental Health Navigator with Christine Meeks and her work with, with those students, as well as now the Hope Squad come in this direction, so.
And I'm looking forward to learning more about that.
Okay, good, good. Any other questions?
I have one. The district, as a district, we've, you know, the, the free and reduced lunch program has been kind of a benefit to people, but sometimes in the past, we've had, it seems like getting people to sign up and ask for that's been a help. I've been in some other organizations that may have scholarships or things to help people who need it, but then sometimes it's hard to get the people to either ask for it, for whatever those barriers are. What's, what's your experience with the resources we have, or the programs we have, or the things we can do to help people versus the people who want the help and who are asking for the help? Is there more of one or the other? Do you think, have you had more struggles of getting enough resources to help the people who need it, or maybe more struggles of getting the people who need it to ask for the help?
I would say, and I don't know if I would label it as a struggle, right? But I would say that, you know, once again, large part of my role is looking for those resources, right? So maybe I might have a family or a student that might come to me, and they have, may have a particular need at that time. And so what do I, you know, what I need to do then is I need to start reaching out to my connections in the community, whether it's county, you know, case managers, as I spoke of earlier, Roberto Riaz at the state, to find out what is available. And I like to say, you know, at this point, that we make things work, right? You know, however that might end up in the end, and so some things may be more challenging, right? Trying to find the resources, but I think between, whether it's a program that's already in place that can support the families and students, or between our generous, you know, our staff are very generous too, if there's a need, right? Staff, community members, you know, being a part of this community, I know that there's a lot of people out there that, that want to reach out and want to help too, if there's, there's students that need help. As I had mentioned earlier, you know, I transitioned from Hartley to the junior senior high school. And one thing that I noticed is that I felt like moving up into the upper grades, I was not finding quite as many programs, resources for those older students, right? And that was, that was an area of probably frustration for me. But once again, that's my role, you know, dig in and I find those things. And so I don't know if that kind of also fits it a little bit, was trying, now trying to unearth those resources or creating, right, creating some programs, like connecting with Cindy Colander this year to bring a food program into the junior senior high school. That was, that was something that I felt like I was, I was meeting barriers with for several years. And she and I talked, and, you know, she recognized what I was recognizing and said, yeah, hunger doesn't end, right, at the end of the elementary school years. So I would say, I hope that answers your question a little bit with what you're asking.
Glad you mentioned that high school food program, because that was something I was going to toot your horn quick before you headed out, was last year when Jenny came and talked to, partnered with, with Neighborhood Food Shelf, expanding, so what it is, is we've expanded the backpack food program up through the high school. And went and gave a great presentation on that committee, so it helps that I have happened to see it. And influence for Wasika to the Cause Committee for United Way, got some additional funding to be able to do that and support our backpack food program. But they operate a pantry style at, at the high school. So it's not just for these select students. It could be any student who might be having a conversation with a friend or a teacher, and we're hearing about something they're nervous about for this coming weekend or this upcoming break. Hey, stop in here and see what you, what you might, what you might need, need and bring home with you. So as far as I know, we are the only senior high regionally that has gone quite that, that all-in to support our hunger, all the way up through 12th grade. So kudos to you and, and our Neighborhood Food Shelf here in Wasika for really stepping up to that. Pretty exciting.
Yeah, and because it's turned into more of a pantry style, been able to help support numerous students and families too.
Okay, anything else? Be good. Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you. And if you ever have any questions, feel free to email me, reach out. I'm happy to answer questions. All right, thank you.
All right, great way to start our meeting. You know, we do, we do so many great things for, for students and families here in Wasika Public Schools. And you can see just one individual in one, in one position, how that, that can impact so many kids. And then over the course of our entire district, how, how fantastic it is. Then you wonder why, well, I don't wonder why, our attendance rates are so high. Students enjoy coming to school because they know they're cared for. So I appreciate the time here tonight. So we're going to move into our next item here on the agenda. And we, I want to take some time here, and it's going to be a lot of information just to, just to put, to toss your direction to consider. We're not asking for any decisions or really any kind of, we're not any going, we still have some things to figure out tonight. But I want to take you through where we are with some space discussions, particularly when it comes to our Southwest Metro program and some of the opportunities that we have for childcare, as we talks about on our Agenda Day, and some of the cost considerations to consider as we move forward with these. Before we move into a lease with another, another building, or before we authorize any large construction project or anything like that, or formally beginning a childcare, we'd obviously come back and, and have a bigger discussion as a board at a, at a, at a regular meeting. But I want to take you through kind of where the discussion is for now. So you can, I printed off, you know, this rather wordy document, so you can bring it with you for reference later. But let me take you through kind of the, the highlights of it for now. So if you think about our strategic growth and change, and why we operate the way we do in learning work, implementation work, and standard work, so what are the emerging influences that drive something new that we want to learn about? Well, we know that we're having staff and, and community childcare challenges, having a hard time finding it. Right now, I know we have at least two teachers in our district, and probably countless others I'm not aware of, who are either on leave or not able to work because they're having a hard time finding childcare. So we know that's an issue in Wasika. We also know that there's some limitations with Southwest Metro being located here in Central. And, and what I mean by that is they just don't have the space to get out and to sometimes have their own, their own space. There is some perceptions, there is some limitations to what they could do to support students if they, they have a crisis because they're located in our building. And then there's multiple programs in this building. So we're into a challenge of space, and, and building procedure norms is a big piece. So I just was meeting with Katie Wheelock today. She's the administrator for Southwest Metro, making sure that we get our crisis goal lined up, because they use different language in their, because they're a different school district, and they're allowed to do that, to use different language for some of their procedures, but they're in our building, which means you got to follow our larger, our larger plan for our entire building, and then modify it to your students, which is, which is sometimes challenging. So it's driven us over the last few years to look at what our other options are for that. So I want to take you through just a couple of different things with part of this puzzle, just so the board understands and has a chance to kind of wrestle with what this could look like if we did something different. So the first piece is, so a lease cost for us, for space goes through a series of transactions as the state statute requires it. It's a little bit, it feels a little bit back and forth, but this is how it works. So an intermediate school does not have any constituent, an intermediate school district doesn't have any constituents to lease levy, to tax, because they're not a, there's no school district boundaries for them. But in statute, what they're allowed to do then is if they have to lease any space, they then bill the students who are attending their program per student. And then that local school district then has the option, based on statute, to lease levy their community to be able to pay that lease cost. So essentially, because they don't have a, a home boundary, they're allowed by state law to then put it on us to pay their rent for the students that we're serving, or they're serving that are ours. That's part of it. In Wasika, it's a little bit extra, extra complicated because we own the building. And so we're billing Southwest Metro for that, for that space. So right now, we're charging, I believe it's $6 a square foot for that. So just over $33,000 is what we annually bill Southwest Metro. And that goes up every so often based on, based on rental rate. So then what happens is that they're allowed to, since they can't lease levy anybody, they take, okay, we're, Wasika Public Schools is just over half of the students in that program. So we get a bill back for about $17,000 of that. We have to pay back to them. Janesville would get some, New Richland gets some, Waterville gets some. Right now, Tri-State United has some students who are here, so they would get some of that bill. So it's divided up based on your enrollment for that option, okay? So then the home district, because we're paying a lease, we're paying a lease cost, we would have the option to lease levy for that $17,000 if we so chose. We don't currently. For that dollar value, we budget it, we budget for it, we paid out of our, our budget, and that's where it goes. And since we're getting, we're getting some of that money in with our current rent that we're caught, that we're charging, it kind of, it kind of is a, is a deal for us. It's, we don't make money off that program because tuition agreements and there are other things that we have to, we have to pay as far as transportation, things like that, with students that might be going to their Chaska program or something like that. But it's not a, it's not an excessive cost. So if we were to lease space at Northridge Plaza, so we looked, I was there on Monday with, with the superintendent from Southwest Metro, John Regan from WHAM, Mike Mahak from New Richland. Jeremy wasn't able to, to come from Janesville that day. And then our facility director and the facility director and program director from Southwest Metro were there. We looked at the space, which is, there's a 6,000 square foot space right next to the Dollar, Dollar, the Dollar Store there. And it's just a wide-open rectangle. It's, it's open. There's no ceilings, there's no floors. It's, it's a wide-open canvas. Plumbing and what, everything is there. Excuse me. Their current space for Southwest Metro is, they have 5,500 square feet downstairs here. And right now, we've, we've spent some time and dollars to renovate that space in the last two years. But if you go, ever go down there, it's still kind of a labyrinth of just kind of weaving through. It's not really like a, well, if I was really to design this space, this is how I would do it. Way better than it used to be, but it's still not, not perfect. So we could do it that. So there would be an opportunity to use that space potentially for our program if we so chose. chose. Regardless, we could hold the lease ourselves and we could then bill Southwest Metro. We'd be paying, it's Kraus Anderson owns the building, we'd be paying them, billing them bills. It would be like one extra transaction through the process. We could do that. Um, or we talked about this with them on Monday, Southwest Metro could just carry the lease directly and that they just pay the lease and then they bill us our portion of what that would be and based on the student count that we have. And that would be, that would be cleanest, um, with that process, regardless of who holds the lease, um, based on just location and, 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 um, efficiency. I want to maintain, I think I mentioned this to the facility committee maybe last week or the week before last. One thing I am conscious of is Southwest Metro, because of this lease levy process and their LTFM, they don't, that they don't have, that's a billable thing too. So anything that they do, they can, we would get a bill for it. So if a student put a hole in the wall, um, rather than to have our team go and do it internally and spend some time in the day, um, I will want to be conscious, they wouldn't just call a contractor, get it done, the bill is whatever it is, and then we get the bill back for that. So that would be one reason why us carrying the lease potentially could be a consideration. But I think we can work that out in the details of, of working that through.
Well, follow up question on that. What could you maybe, and you probably don't have it in front of you, but what kind of costs have we had yearly on things like that?
Yeah.
Where we benefited or?
Yeah. I would say that, I don't have a cost, but I know that we're fixing drywall weekly.
Yeah.
In the, in the, in that room right now.
Sounds like a good class to teach though.
Yes, it is. Right, exactly. Now, when they build-
A good teacher.
When they build and new, um, when, when they build a new space though, if they, if we were to proceed with this new location, they'd put some reinforced, they'd put some reinforced wall coverings on and they'll probably have less of that.
Yeah.
But one time you have a bloody knuckles, you might not do it again, but we'll see where that lands. So that's, I don't know that I have a cost, but I know that we're to the point where Jim Hill has been to my office saying, this is a lot and spent a lot of time in there. And so that's just what I know anecdotally more than anything else right now. But we can look at it from material cost and time cost, um, as we get into it. But we'd be kind of keeping track of the, we, we could be in charge of the maintenance and the cleaning and that kind of thing in our rotation. The mall of course has an agreement of what we do for snow removal and all that kind of stuff that if we went that direction. And, and food service already caters to teams, so going over to that site to cater food will be fine. Here's the, the cost factor. Kraus Anderson did put together a, did put together, um, some numbers for us. You know, the, the overall lease would be roughly $75,000 a year, uh, for the total lease. So I would anticipate our, our portion based on that would be between 35 and $40,000 a year, depending on our percentage of the, of the students with that. Um, you know, with, so it'd be, it would be some additional cost to us if, if we chose to go this direction. That's just the reality of it. That's, that's only fair to think about. Um, we did have Ellers just put together this, this for us. Um, if we were to say, for example, our, our lease, you're aware of this, our levy's a little over $2 million. If we were to add a $40,000 lease levy, uh, to our, to our levy, payable 25, what you have, what I'm passing around is just that's this, that's what the tax impact would be to our community, um, if we chose to do that. You could, you can see it's a pretty, it's a relatively small, um, impact to our taxpayers to do that. The board certainly could choose not to do that and could choose to just direct Matt and I to work with our budget and see if we can just work that $35,000 into the budget. And that would be, uh, something we could do. Uh, but in terms of, um, levy cost, this would be something we could add to the levy for pay 25 if we chose to head this direction.
And do you say 40 because it's essentially 40 more than the current cost?
Correct. 40 more than the current cost. We don't, the only lease levy we have currently is the $30,000 that we, we lease levy for, um, maintenance of the arena, that we, that we provide to the arena board for maintenance of the arena. So if we were to add an additional $40,000 under our lease levy, this would be the increase that our average levy would see on those homeowners. Lease levy for our size district capacity based on roughly 1,700 students, 360,000 would be roughly about as high as we could go with our lease levy. We, we have no reason to, we don't lease anything for that dollar value, but we're well within our capacity of being able to do that if we so chose to do that. It's also not a very high dollar value. And so it might be within the realm of just saying, okay, see if you can work that into the budget and see where it goes if that's where we decided to go. The other thing that we just confirmed today with our, with, with Ellers is that, um, it's on, and it's on the sheet here, the very, very bottom piece of it, is the property owner, um, Kraus Anderson is offering an improvement allowance for the space. Um, they are, and I didn't put it, I didn't write it down here, you can write it down with your pen, but I didn't write it down here in case anybody asked for this, then it wasn't out there in the community. But $180,000 is what Kraus Anderson has offered to reimburse us for any improvement of the space. And so our facility team right now is working on what that design would look like for that space to get an estimate of what that would cost. Um, and I know Darren sent me some texts earlier this week, we got some good connections there to help if we need to, uh, working forward for what that, what that space could be. That also, if we chose, if anything went over that 180,000, we would have the option to put that on our lease levy as well, um, for that renovation, because renovations, um, dollars are an option. I didn't put anything on here because we don't know what that estimate's going to be. But it's just something to consider for the board, um, as we think, as we think through that. So Kraus Anderson is, I, that, um, we know what Team Academy is paying per square foot and I know a dollar, dollar, the Dollar Store is paying per square foot and they're giving us a, definitely a fair rate and, and offering to help us improve the space. So there's some motivation there for them to put us in there, but, um, that would be what we, what we'd see. Uh, if I move over to the backside, I just want to talk through a little bit of the consequences here. So what would be the outcome, the, the consequences or outcomes of moving there? You know, we'd have an intentionally designed space for those students with high level needs. You know, we have some students right now who are in regular classrooms, kind of doing the best they can down there, but we could intentionally design a space potentially out there for, to support their needs. Some space to, to move, to maybe have some, have some calming space, de-escalate, that kind of thing and work things through. Um, we also potentially could create some more space. If it, right now, we're not maximizing the space for the number of students they could serve. Uh, we're still busing a lot of students to Shakopee and Chaska. And if we designed it with, with two extra classrooms, which we'd have room to do, we could potentially not have to transport at least four or five of our kids out of the district and keep them home, which would be good for our transportation cost and good for their home and their, their, their life, uh, working it that way. It would also help the South, Southwest Metro students, that they have their own space. I think sometimes they feel like they're, they, they have their own entrance, they come in the back, they, they kind of walk to the gym and they walk to the cafeteria, but this isn't their school. They're, they're living by our rules, they're doing this. It's also, I, I can't think of another example. When I was talking with Melanie, she's their program coordinator on Monday, we couldn't think of another example of a setting for program that's attached to a K-12 building, uh, at least locally. And so-
I mean, have you had conversations with Team?
Not yet.
Okay.
No. Yeah.
Quite a bit of space between Team and this location.
Correct. Yeah, there's this space.
They're not right next to each other, but-
Right.
Same parking lot.
Yeah, same parking lot. In fact, I'm hoping, we, we actually probably would partner with them for potentially some gym space and some outside space, potentially working it that way for that. But yeah, it's a similar, similar space. Um, but there would be less potential disruption to our central building program here. That's what happened. It opens space here in this building too, uh, potentially for some of that childcare need we talked about at the very beginning of the, of the discussion, um, when it comes to adding. And because it's such a big space, Nikki Benson and I were down there the other day. Right now the layout is there's a really large classroom on the end of the building there and then several smaller areas throughout that might be ideal childcare spaces. As preschool becomes a, a premium in the community as well, we have the potential to add in our preschool room down there too, with some additional space. So that could be, that could be good. Um, there would be additional cost to the district, not, not a lot, but, but some, we have to consider that either through levy or general fund budgeting, we'd have to recognize that there'd be a little bit of extra cost to us, um, to provide that service, um, for everybody, but it would be something to consider. And it would be additional square footage for our maintenance team to, to have to cover and clean and work through. So those are some things to think through there. Um, I mentioned briefly about what we did on Monday and are the next steps here. Right now we're kind of in that letting them, the facility team work together to decide what that could look like. Mostly Southwest Metro is working on this right now because what could we do with that space to see where that lands? And we'll bring it back, of course, to the board when we have that going on. I wouldn't anticipate anything ready for the fall, to, to transition students for the fall. Maybe i- if everything lined up and the stars were in our favor, you never know, but I wouldn't necessarily plan on transitioning students in, in August, considering it's the 2nd of May right now to do that work. But we're working to getting that started and seeing where it goes. Um, that wouldn't be something that we could, we could transfer that mid-year if, if we needed to, if things were ready. Community Ed, back to the childcare side, Nikki's meeting with some local districts that also do those childcare as part of their districts, district work to kind of get an understanding of how that looks for expectations for younger, younger students and infants of that. And then we're also looking, we've identified two rooms, uh, down by the, by the preschool area, uh, that currently are used throughout the day for sporadic things, um, some conference. It's kind of a meeting space, kind of a lounge space they kind of use it for. And then another, another space they have, um, some family ed classes, one morning a week and a couple nights a week. So we have some ideas for ways we might be able to, um, even start some of our childcare things as early as the fall, like when the school year gets back into, back into session, um, as kind of maybe a, a preliminary start to the process. Um, and then with maybe expanding that program when the larger space does come available, should we move students over to, uh, so the Southwest Metro students over to the mall? Um, one thing that I've asked, I've asked Nikki to work on, um, with Jeff Jensen is really by, in, in May, we want to really know, are we going to be able to provide anything extra for childcare by the fall or not? Because we want, planners have to be able to plan, our employees have to be able to plan. Uh, it's still getting later than I'd like it to, but that's just how the process has moved along. We're not, a- a- anything would be more than we have right now. So we're, we're just moving forward with that process too. Um, that's not a, that's not a moneymaker program either. It's a, but when you compare it with your preschool and your school age care system, it, it becomes, that's where you're able to kind of break even a little bit on those processes for childcare, um, option, because your ratios obviously get smaller for, for younger students, for what you need for staff with, with those students there. So, um, right now it's a lot of, now we're going to see where it lands for the cost for renovation, what are our expectations for childcare, but it could be some exciting opportunities for, for us to provide some additional service to the community, um, coming up as early as, as this fall or, or in the coming year perhaps. Also, I think that it just allows us to be more flexible and creative with the space that we do have. And as part of our overall facility conversation, I think it's a, it's a great opportunity to, to determine, how does it look to renovate and utilize a space that's not one of our K-12 brick and mortar sites so that when we're looking at our bigger, uh, facility conversation, we can, we can have some of those conversations as well as appropriate with that option there. So I think it's, it's going to be a, a good thing with more to come, but I didn't want it to get any further down the pike than it already is without the whole board kind of being caught up with where we are in the planning and what questions you might have.
Do you have any ideas, you know, you said the cost, you know, just the rent would be 40,000. Do you have any ideas if you add everything, if everything works out, works out and we have kids there, then you have catering, you have cleaning, what would be additional budget to do that, comparing what we have here?
Yeah. Um, I don't know, the only additional thing that we probably have to add would potentially be some hours of maintenance staff. So that would be the most, maybe a couple hours a day of, of cleaning in there. It wouldn't really be any additional, because, because the catering, that, that would be billable Southwest Metro. They don't get to bill us back for that. So we would be, we would be supporting that. They'd be, well, it's reimbursable meals for free meals anyway, but that wouldn't be a cost to us for that. It would, it would just be the maintenance and cleaning costs, um, for that option. Yeah.
And if, if we don't, I mean, if Southwest Metro directly handles the lease, we wouldn't have to do the cleaning or the maintenance.
We wouldn't have to.
No.
We would, no, we wouldn't have to. It might be the cheapest option. So, but in which case we would bill them.
Right. And then they would-
Just like we-
Attach it to our students and bill us back kind of a thing.
Right. But it's, but it's a chargeback model, just like currently we, we, so for example, currently the general fund charges our food service fund certain amount of dollars a year to be able to clean the kitchens.
Okay.
Based on custodial maintenance and they pay rent-
Gotcha.
-in our space, uh, for being there. So Fund Two will pay Fund One, that kind of option. So it would be that kind of thing too.
Yep.
But yeah, but that would be the additional option, but, but not a whole lot more than that. Yeah.
So with us as, say for easy math, half the students at Southwest Metro, but then the other districts having other portions, does that mean we're kind of half of the decision and the other districts are also the same? Or how's that, or is it completely a Southwest Metro decision or how's that decided?
Well, um, yeah, historically it has been, as I went back and looked, historically Wasika has kind of suggested where we're going to go. And then their districts have kind of said, okay, that sounds great. Because the dollar value to them is very minimal. Uh, and so to them, it's, it's serving their students without having to, they don't really have a lot of options, um, in order, in order, neither, any of the way. If we didn't have the program, we'd be sending kids 100 miles away every day. And so we, that's why John and Mike were at the meeting with me on Monday. So they're also discussing with their board, hey, here's what we've got going on, here's some things that are happening. Both of them were kind of like, yeah, it makes sense, that's what we can do, right? And then we'll roll from there.
And the childcare options would, maybe we're thinking too far ahead, would that be maybe preference to, or at least first rights to our staff and teachers?
It would be, yeah. And, and, um, so based on how we'd have to subsidize that with our general fund, you know, just like we'd move some dollars between general fund and community ed fund, it has to be open to the public. Um, otherwise you couldn't use public funds to be able to help support that. So we, we do want to be, have it available, but we do want to, but we, our plan is to prioritize staff. So they have the first, but not staff only. That's the distinct difference. It wouldn't be staff only, it would be prioritization. And then we'll certainly open it up to the public if we didn't have, we weren't full.
And, and just a simple thought to that, because I would assume that the infant care would go year round, just like everything else, but typically a staff will pull out for summertime and then you load up with the other people and it's first come, first served type of a thing else. And may cause a problem because you load it up with the public and stuff, you know what I'm saying? Come back to the same problem we're having with two teachers not having daycare.
Yeah. Yeah. It might, um, the, the, the good news on that is we have a model already with our school age care. How that functions over the course of the summer. So there's already a little bit of an ebb and a flow in the process at least anyway, in terms of how they, how they manage that.[1631.33] I don't know how that rolls, but that's the, how they work with it, yeah.
Well, that's why Nikki is inquiring with other districts how they do it, so.
Moving target.
When I think that would be no different than any other, like, facility where sometimes you just have to stay enrolled a certain amount of time over the summer, just to hold your spot or whatnot.
Yeah. I don't, I, I have not had the conversation recently in Wasika. I think the pandemic changed things a little bit, I know, but I know when I was in my previous district, you, because my students were in child, were there in the childcare, you had to, I think, be there one day a week at minimum to hold your spot for the, all summer, to hold your spot for the next year. So there's, there's procedures they have in place. Yeah.
Well, that infant daycare is in such demand.
Yes.
And for that reason, I, I kind of look at it too and say, yeah, we're talking about, there's a potential cost, there's the, do we lease, do we whatever, even if we is at a lease levy, there's potential costs to taxpayers, but, but what's the, what do we get from that? Do we get childcare options? Right now, that's a struggle for the community of-
Yeah.
Having enough childcare, if, if a couple bucks a month-
Which is a benefit to our teachers.
Right. Benefits the teachers, benefits-
It's benefits the whole community.
The whole community.
It does.
So, that's like-
I think some would argue like, that's not our spot as the school district, but I also think there are some other perks to moving them to a, moving the Southwest Metro's to another. I mean, that's a, I mean, really, that's good for them and good for the other programming here in this building too, I think.
And I'm not tying that dollar to the infant care at all. I'm, I'm looking at the Southwest Metro. I mean, I don't feel that that, because when you do that, you're looking at, well, I'm paying seven dollars for somebody to get daycare. I'm not looking at it that way, because it's supposed to float itself anyways, being through community ed.
Yeah. And you're, and you're right. And that's, that's probably, as we talk about the emerging influences, our Southwest Metro limitations probably drove the conversation from beginning. And now the childcare option has just been something that's come up as a, perhaps a, of that unintended consequence, it's a positive one, through having to look at that move, uh, going forward with that option. And we have some nice space down there that could serve, serve it well.
And, and we already have the experience of childcare. I mean, I mean, I know that there's been talk about other entities adding childcare in some capacity, but we do already have that experience. It's, it's a, it's a, yeah. I think if we can expand it, I think it's worth, I think it's worth looking into. You know, and generally speaking, also, I know there's new rules going into home daycares also. Um, those have yet to be put in place, but that may limit that more too.
Yeah. And we, and we don't, with preschool or any early learning or even childcare now, we don't aim to be the only game in time. We aim to be a partner and support our community. We're not trying to monopolize any market or say we're the only one there. We're just trying to provide additional options for our community that, that, that they could have access to. From an enrollment standpoint, it does potentially allow us to get more families connected to our district earlier, which is a good thing too for enrollment, as we get, as we get some students, um, being part of our Blue Jay family, potentially, you know, has infants. That option there.
Well, and if our, there's been much talk in our community about how do we get more people to move in, how do we get families to move in? If there is a shortage of daycare, that is a consideration that families are gonna consider. If we can help solve that, we can do our part to get more people to come here, I think.
Yeah. Our part of the whole process. Yeah.
Great.
All right. More to come with that. And, um, it wouldn't be a decision until fall or any dollars on where you want to put the dollars, but we'll decide there as we go in there for that. So our third op, our third, um, item tonight is just a, kind of a fun one, and I'll pass this around just again, so you have it, so I don't have to read everything to you, but, um, one of the things that I, I thought was interesting coming up in May was, you know, what do we have going on this summer in our buildings and what, what's happening? And I think I'm, every year I am just amazed at how much our buildings are used by the, by our staff, by our students, by the public. And, and I want to just share with you, so what you can, the paper that I handed to you was just the summer programming highlight when it comes to kind of academic and summer school option. So you can see in Hartley, we're, we're looking at the summer programming to target math and reading based on standards. Students have been identified as needing additional support, so they're willing to come in, um, and meet there. Um, you can see that also teachers are working on their Amplify curriculum and working on the Read Act work, um, and continuing to run through that extended school year program, which is, which is, um, the specialized program, that option too. So lots going on there. Similar programming at WIS, uh, continuing to work through that option. You know, summer school is not, um, required, uh, for students at, at any level except credit recovery. Need to come if you want to get your credit. But as far as other than that, we can, we can encourage and invite. But I think that what we find is we're finding that we're providing some exciting and enriching opportunity, and we are, each year we, we have full classes like that. And I know the last couple of years, um, our, our principals have done an exceptional job at working with families to get kids to these programs. Transportation has not been something we have traditionally provided in the summer, but now we've started to add some smart bus tokens, started to add some different transportation routes with some of our, um, uh, uh, state money that can consume that outside of the school year, outside of the school day funding that is part of the ASTRO program, working through that. So continuing to get, to get kids there. In junior high, I'm excited we, that we have several students signed up this year, um, to, to work on those, um, field trips and try to make that as, as enriching and as far as it project based as we possibly can. Again, uh, failing a class in junior high does not require you to make up that credit, um, but it's really, um, beneficial for the student to get back and, and make up that learning and anything with that opportunity there. Um, and, and our teachers are continuing to work with some, there's some, um, core and letters training going on for our junior high staff as well. At the ALC, so we, ALC, it's also combining our ALC and our high school students who are needing credit recovery. So the ALC runs that over the summer. Anyone who's behind credits towards graduation from all of our district areas, but also ours, um, have the opportunity to, you know, recover credit. And it's something, if you remember, we worked on this three, this probably three years ago now, maybe even four, um, transitioning to, um, standards-based credit recovery. So if a student fails English, they don't have to take the entire course over again. We work at what standards they didn't learn, so they're able to then learn those things, and it might only be a few weeks worth of work. They make that learning up, they evidence, demonstrate that they've learned the material, they get their credit and they can move on to something else. So, um, Mandine Owner, uh, the program, like Jake Hager started that a few years ago, but Mandine Owner really has really expanded that to all different subject areas. And so we have, um, a lot of opportunities for students to make up and get back on track, uh, for their four-year graduation. And if you, I was just talking with Jenny before the meeting, and we reviewed this in one of our last vision card conversations. We have about ninety-three percent of our students that are in nine twelve who are on track to graduate in four years because we're taking them. And this is one of those opportunities to catch them up. Um, because it's about learning, it's not just about sitting in the seat for the number of hours, you have to know the material. And we're getting, um, obviously food, food out there. Low, a little bit lower, uh, on the bottom of the page is some information about our summer feeding program and how Amy McQuerry is managing that. They are working really creatively to get food to our buildings and, and, and to breakfast for our kids, because based on the summer feeding program and how that's funded and what your, what your, um, uh, qualifications are, the only building that we can have open site here is Central in our, in our district. And some of that's driven by the free and reduced count, but also some of that's driven by just attendance, what programs we have. But I know Amy's working hard with the principals to get maybe a sack lunch or a snack over to the buildings, or we, they walk the Hartley kids over as part of their school day for summer school to get that going there for that. So trying to get more food access to kids as much as we possibly can. And Jenny's talking about the summer opportunity there for, um, for, uh, the high school students. So that's the academic side. And I guess special education students I should highlight there in what they call extended school year that starts right around the fourth of July, usually the first we get, July one or so, and then goes through a good chunk of the rest of the summer. They start a little bit later than the other summer programs, just so staff can, can have some breaks and do some things differently. But those are students that were identified by their IEP team as needing some extra support in the summertime. That's the academic side. But then I also had a, got, got a, an email from Nikki. Um, she's excited. There are new classes out being offered this summer for community ed. Hiking day at Courthouse Park, Disc Golf, uh, Ninja Gymnastics, I don't know what that will look like at community ed. Meditation, meditation, I could use some of that sometimes. Uh, youth softball program, now that's back. That's something that has been rejuvenated and run through the months of June, uh, for that opportunity. Only a few spots remaining, she says, for that. Um, and then swimming lessons, swimming lessons is, is, is exciting for us, because now that's something that we are are working on, getting through this summer and working hard on. And then we've been in conversations with, um, with the city of Wasika and their, um, their manager of the water park and how we can coordinate for aquatics potentially going forward to, to have our swimming lessons be a little more enhanced as a Red, Red Cross program, and that could be exciting going on for the summer of twenty-five. There's some pretty, pretty neat stuff. Also wanted to highlight Princess and the Pea and, uh, and Rapunzel coming up this summer for our, our youth, uh, our youth, uh, plays. She's talked about ninja classes as well too, but anyway, that's what we've got going on. There must be a lot of that opportunity going on. Um, and then just again, highlight, even in our building, from Joe mentioned, strength and conditioning, three days a week all summer long for all students. You don't have to be a member of a sport. You can sign up for summer strength and conditioning with, with Coach Turek and their coaches if they want. Doesn't have to be sports specific. Football goes to UMD for the, at the end of June to get that figured out. All of our activities and sports are doing things all summer long, uh, with everything at the high school. So you can see the youth, youth programs out. Um, and the things I was talking with, um, with Coach Anderson about the basketball the other day is how much he and his team appreciates the youth camps that they do and the, and the, uh, high school players being able to interact with the youth kids and get them going. And I know they do that in a lot, multiple sports, they get them really engaged with that opportunity. So it's not a quiet summer around Wasika Public Schools, but we're, now it is May two, it's about ready to get rolling. Before you know it, I think the first section tournament comes up here in the next week or so, for spring sports already, you could see how, how fast that went by. So lots highlighted there, but I thought that was a neat. And then at the end of summer, as we think about, um, probably the August, um, regular meeting, I'll, I'll ask, um, Nikki and, um, and some of our principals to come and share the summer program report, so you get some of those, those results at the end, at the end of the day. But I wanted to share with you kind of, here's what's coming up here right now. That's it.
Is that all? Is that all?
That's all.
On the summer programming for like Hartley, WIS and, and at the ALC and junior high, how many students participate in that?
Yeah, I would say that, I wanted to say there was roughly forty at, at Hartley and probably twenty to thirty at WIS. Junior high, if they can get ten to fifteen on a given summer, that's going well. Had a couple summers where they haven't been able to run it because they haven't had enough kids. So I think right now we're pushing hard to try to get enough kids enrolled in that. Yeah. And, and ALC is enough to have all of our teachers going. Summertime. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
For the, the summer food program, um, I know that it's advertised and stuff. I mean, have they had, have they ever considered like just putting like a sandwich board like outside whatever entrance you would go in, like lunch, you know, open for meals or?
Yeah, there's a sign sitting up here when you, when you come here, yeah.
Okay. And, and that's, and that's the door that you go in and stuff?
Yeah.
I feel like sometimes it's, it's always like, where is it again? Yeah.
Yep.
Well, that's something I think you could post on social too, is like a picture of that, like, this is where you go. Right, yeah.
Yeah, you communicate that more.
Because unless, because yeah, and if you're newer to the community, you might not have any idea- Right. Is that kitchen and, and cafeteria in, in this building and stuff, and there it is? And, yeah.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I think it's fine that it's here. It's just, yeah, just making sure that the word gets out.
Yeah, so much, so much action goes on at our, at our high school in the WIS area. It'd be nice if we had a site there, but that's just not where it goes. But they're creative with it. They get, they get food up there for kids and-
Yeah.
We try to make it work as best we can.
Central building is central, so it works.
Any other questions for Eric? No? And before you know it, it's fall. And we do it all over again. Okay, um, I guess then we're done. Thank you.